Commission, would you all rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the best of all, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Villalobos, would you like to make the TV coverage announcement?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Montecito Planning Commission hearings are televised live on County of Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV Channel 20, at 9:00 a.m. in the South Coast, Lampook, San Inez Valley, Santa Maria, and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of Montecito Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 p.m. on CSB-TV Channel 20. Now for the roll call. Commissioner Gottsinger.
Here.
Commissioner Overall.
Here.
Commissioner Burrows.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Barick.
Here.
Thank you.
Secretary Black, you want to handle the projection report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. This morning you have one consent item on your agenda, two briefings from staff, and four regular items, and all of those are ready to move forward today.
Okay.
I think some of our estimates are perhaps a bit long, and so we may be able to get through quicker than the agenda might seem.
Excellent.
In terms of upcoming hearings, your hearing in June or in May will be May 16th, and you have about a half a day's worth of work on that day already. And then in June, we don't have anything projected out yet or further into the year. You may have read about the Miramar project coming back in, and just wanted to at least give you an early warning about when we think we might be bringing that to your commission. Now, this is a pretty risky thing to say, since we don't have an application that's submitted, so I'm projecting here. But we are anticipating getting an application in June. We will be working with the Caruso folks in the meantime to make sure that their application is as complete as possible. And then we are hopeful, if everything goes very, very well, to bring that item to your commission in December, at your December meeting. So that's what we're projecting right now. I'll let you know as time goes on whether or not we think we can meet that projection.
Excellent.
And that's really all I had to report.
Okay. Director's report? Mr. Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. You've been absent at the board meetings lately, and that's really nice when we have nothing going forward from your commission to the board that they have to hear an appeal on. Unfortunately, we have now three of them that are coming up in the next couple of months. Franklin, as you recall, that's the veterinary clinic. Cozave Venus is also been appealed, and the Fraser Siemens project has been appealed. So they will all be going to the commission, or to the board, in the next couple of months.
Cozave Venus is the Buena Vista?
Olive Mill.
Olive Mill. Excuse me.
Cozave Venus is the trees.
Yes, thank you.
Would also report that you've already gone through this with the proposed change to the code which would allow for removal of the LUP requirement if you have a CUP or a development plan. That has now also been approved by the county planning commission, so we'll be going forward to the board with that in the very near future. It's one that seems to me that it's very necessary in terms of an applicant, and your board is approv-- your commission is approved, and the planning commission is approved. So we'll be going forward with that. That's all I have for today.
Okay, very good, thank you. Now's the time for our public comment, so if there's anyone that wishes to address the planning commission on an item that's not on the agenda, now would be the time for that. And I don't, we don't have any speaker slips, so it looks like we can close the public comment period and move on to the planning commissioners' informational reports. Commissioner Gottsinger, maybe I can start with you. Do you have anything, any informational reports for us?
No.
Commissioner Overall?
No.
Commissioner, Commissioner Burrows?
No.
Commissioner Phillips?
No.
And/or do I? So, pretty quiet. Like it when it's that way. Let's see, planning commissioner divisional briefings, status of active projects. Secretary Black?
Mr. Chair, we don't have any divisional briefings of this nature on today. We do have two briefings that we're going to provide as items one and two. We thought that was, the public was better served specifying those on the agenda.
Okay, thank you. So the next item is the approval of the minutes of our March 21st and March 29th meetings. And if you've got, if you all have had a chance to look at those and have any corrections or additions to them, and if not, all entertain motions.
Mr. Chair, I've read them, and they appear to be in order. I move that we approve the minutes of our last two meetings.
So it's moved to approve the minutes of March 21st and March 29th as a group? Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye, opposed no. Aye.
I was not in attendance at the March 21st meeting, so I would be abstaining from that vote, and aye on March 29th.
Good, so noted. So, let's move on then to our consent agenda items. We have one consent item, which is the Eldred Single Family Residence, and we're going to open this for, because it is, we haven't done many of these before, but we're going to open it for public comment if any, oh, I'm sorry, you have to read it into the record. I'm moving a little too fast here. Excuse me, David.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of David Eldred owner to consider case number 07CDH6, application filed on January 29th, 2007, for a coastal development permit, and to accept 01ND03 as adequate environmental review for case number 07CDH6 pursuant to section 15162 of the state guidelines for implementation of the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. So on these consent items, we have the option to take a presentation, and we will take public comment if there is any, but otherwise, we can simply entertain a motion on this item, if maybe.
Mr. Chair, could you review for everyone, including me, the, why it's a consent item?
I think that's probably better if we have Secretary Black give you the, that story.
Mr. Chair, and Commissioner Phillips, we use our judgment in determining which items we think the commission can take on consent, and we tend to look to simpler items that we believe your commission can, can handle with a written staff report only. In this particular case, the Montecito Planning Commission reviewed and acted upon projects on this site in the past year or two, several years, I guess, and we felt like the project changes were simple enough that it didn't require an extensive presentation, but we'd be happy to present the project if that would be more useful to your commission. So I guess the simple answer to your question is, there's no clear-cut guidelines. It's really a judgment issue and something that we are trying to see if, if we can identify appropriate cases for the commission to take on consent.
And Commissioner Phillips, it's always your option to say that you want to hear the presentation on any item that shows up on the consent agenda, but if none of us feel that it's, rises to the occasion of having that level of detail, we can simply move it forward.
So it's the sense of staff that this project is so within the parameters that there wouldn't be an issue?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, that coupled with the fact that you reviewed a discretionary application as well as two CDHs on this site in the relatively recent past, we felt that this was something that could be handled on consent.
Well, you are aware that this home is only 4,700 square feet, and that we, we like to approve those big houses.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, Mr. Heaton is here today, and he can provide some more detailed background information on the project without going into a full presentation, if you'd like, if you want to get a better sense of what that project is.
That's good, thank you.
So again, Commissioner Phillips, would you like this, your presentation on this item?
You know, I've read it, and it does seem to be well within the parameters that we're typically concerned about, so I don't need to see it.
Okay. Why don't we see if there's any public comment first? Commissioner Burrows?
I do have a question into the past zoning violation, and that involved some removal of oak trees, and then you say that it was successfully mitigated. Could you please tell us how, the extent to which it was mitigated, the removal of the trees?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Burrows, my name's Jim Heaton, I'm the planner on this project. There was a past zoning violation that had to do with the removal of several oak trees, and it was mitigated through planting of over 100 oak trees on the site, and there was a permit compliance case that was closed on this, acknowledging that it was mitigated.
As long as we're doing this, are there other, okay, we'll do public comment. Does anybody wish to address the commission on this item? We'll open it for public comment. Not seeing any, we'll close the public comment period. Are there other questions of staff by the other commissioners?
I have just one, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Phillips?
Is there anything that, any part of this project where it was a difficult call for you, and you can point that to us, so we can see if it's difficult as well? Or is it all very comfortable?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, the staff believes this project was fairly straightforward.
Okay. How about the question?
Commissioner Overall?
Just for clarification, because I'm afraid I might have missed something here. As I read this on page three, I thought the only thing that we were reviewing was a slight modification in the private easement, that that's the subject of that, of this, is that, that the rest of it had been approved. Am I misunderstanding that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Overall, the, the proposed project is for the coastal development permit for the single-family dwelling, attached garage, guest house, and swimming pool. So...
I understand that, but I thought that had already been approved back in, whenever it was, in 2004, and the only change is this revision to the, to the easement.
Commissioner Overall, as I understand it, and maybe you can help us out on this, I, I am on, as I understand it, the permit has expired is the reason we're seeing this again, and really, the only change is that slight modification to the lot line. And maybe it would be good, since that is the one change, if we could take a look and, or maybe you could explain to us what the slight change in the, I had trouble finding it on the, on the map that we were given.
Mr. Chair, the, the previously approved permit was granted a one-time extension and is due to expire in July of this year, so it has not yet expired. This project proposal would replace that with a smaller, single-family dwelling. The reference to the slight change in the access was part of the previously approved staff report and conditions of approval, and was retained as part of that for this, for this project.
So that, that was included in the previous application as well? I didn't understand that. Okay, that's why it didn't show on the map.
So, Mr. Chair Commissioners, this project is essentially a redesign of a previously approved house on this site. That's why we placed it on the consent agenda. There was a house that went through full review by your commission previously. It was approved. This is a redesign in a similar style. That is a smaller house, so it doesn't present much by way of issues. It's on a lot that was the subject of a lot line adjustment, where there is a development envelope that specified the house is fully within the development envelope, and there are really no other issues.
Very good. Commissioners?
I move...
I'll entertain a motion for a, a motion.
So move.
It's been moved for approval of C1, our consent item. Is there a second on that motion? And you're moving, I assume, the staff's recommendations on this item?
That's correct.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and second to move the staff's recommendations on page two forward. All in favor say aye, opposed no. Aye.
Aye.
Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to our standard agenda, our first item is the Montecito BAR improved data availability briefing. And Secretary Black, I believe you're going to make that presentation for us today.
Mr. Chair, if you could just give me a moment to gather the appropriate staff and get the PowerPoint presentation up, I'd appreciate that.
All right, we'll take a few-minute break.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm really pleased to be able to come to the commission today and review some work items that both my staff, members of your commission, members of the Montecito Association, and others have been working on for some time. And what we're going to do is, is present three different, or three separate items that we've worked on and at least have concluded in some form or another. And I think it's just helpful to review, so you sort of understand what you're seeing in the context that you'll be seeing projects in, in the future. Could you just go to that next slide, Julie? So the three items are some improvements that we have actually started to implement in, with the Montecito BAR in terms of the forms that they use in their meetings and the application submittal requirements, and Ms. Harris will be going over those. The second is the square footage database that we actually used, I believe, at your hearing last month, in the context of a project. And June will be, Ms. Pujol will be going over the project and how that data can be used, and I just want to emphasize, because this has come up almost every time we've talked about it, this is a compilation of existing data formatted in a way that helps both staff, the Montecito BAR, and the Montecito Planning Commission make determinations of consistency with the Montecito design guidelines. So it's not new information, it's not new interpretation, it's just a way of compiling data to help us out, and it's not perfect, as we've already seen. The third is a little bit less final work, but a progress report on the road encroachment procedures for Montecito rights of way. And Ms. Pujol will also be updating the commission on where we're at on that. Certain procedures are in place, and there's some additional work that needs to be done, and some work that may be done if it's funded. So we'll go through each of those items, and then, you know, if the commission has questions as we go along, we're happy to entertain them. This doesn't need to be a very formal hearing, and of course, we'll take public comment.
Okay. And this is, as I understand, this is a presentation, you're not looking for any action by the commission today?
No, none of...
Other than our comments?
Mr. Chair, none of these items require action. It's really meant to inform the commission about some additional tools or procedures that we've put into place that we think will help with the processing of Montecito BAR and your applications that you see. So no actions required, there's no policy changes. We just wanted to let you know and receive any input from the commission as a whole and the community.
Excellent, thank you. So we're ready for your presentation, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. I'm going to be presenting some of the information that we're now using in the Montecito BAR, and that arose out of the subcommittee that was addressing Montecito BAR procedures. And I have for you two handouts. The first handout, which is titled Revised Submittal Requirements and New Forms, is actually the work product that came out of the subcommittee, and much, all of the information that is in here was then incorporated into a new Montecito Board of Architectural Review application, and so we actually gave you copies of the application packet, so you see now what is available and what is being handed out to applicants for use when they submit for concept review for the MBR. So both, you know, the application includes everything that's, that's in the work product of the commission, committee, sorry. And what was, what was generated from here was a summary of, of information and a review, essentially just what the purpose of the MBR review process is all about, and how you go through that process, and that's that, that first, just a little over a page of information in the handout, and that just provides some clear explanation about what the process is about, what the levels of review are all about. And this information was incorporated as an informational page in the application, so that people, the applicants can see more clearly what it is that's expected from the MBR review process, and what's, what's expected of them, what's expected from the MBR itself. There is also a revised and clarified list of submittal requirements that was incorporated into the application, that just expanded upon our existing, the previous existing submittal requirements. There is a new statistics table for use on Montecito projects that was incorporated into the application, and some additional forms for use by the MBR at their meetings. And we were supposed to be on that slide. So on to the next one. In the MBR submittal requirements, we have the information regarding the MBR, which I just mentioned, that was condensed and included in the application on page four of the, of the actual application, is just a condensation of that information. It doesn't refer to attachments as the work product of the subcommittee referred to them, but it's all the same information. There is a revised and clarified list of submittal requirements, and that's on page seven of the application packet, and this is the same, there, it started with the same submittal requirements on the current BAR application that's used countywide, and the subcommittee went through this and said, you know, there's, there's places where it's not exactly clear what that information should contain, and, and we just added some clarification, what needs to be in there for each level of review. We updated, adding, moving some information from what's, what you should have for final review. We moved it up to preliminary review, because now it's the preliminary view that is the decision by the MBR that can be appealed, and so we wanted to make sure that it was clear that enough information was submitted by the applicants for preliminary review in order to have the MBR make that decision. So it's, it's much more clear now than I think it was before. A new statistics table was also developed, and that's the last two pages of the application packet, and, I think we can go, here's a copy of that on screen. And this information was submitted and, or developed for a couple of reasons. And the first is that I think each applicant or architect would often submit the statistics in a slightly different form, and it led to, I think, a lot more time and effort on the part of the BAR and the applicants in the meeting, making sure what was the right information presented to clarify what the floor area was of the proposed house, and how that related to floor area ratio, because everybody had a little bit of a different way of how they'd put that together. So this was developed in order to clarify the information presented, so it would be clear what's part of the main house, what's garage, what's accessory structures, starting with existing and proposed, any areas to be demolished. And then, part three, which is at the bottom of the first page, is the formulas for putting together the FAR calculation and putting it on the plans. The second page goes through another list of building area calculations, which is what's looked at by the building department. And the reason why this was also included here for these, for these statistics is, many of the architects as well go ahead and they put these, these statistics on that, that front data page of the plans, because the building division uses a different floor area, larger floor area for calculating their fees, and so the idea was to have both of these sets of statistics on the page, since these are the plan, these are the plans, they'll end up submitting the same set of plans to the building department for the building permits. So the intent was to clarify, again, the information that should be on the plans and have everybody submitting the same. And moving on to the forms that are now being used by the MBR, I think there's been about two meetings, maybe three meetings where we've started using the forms. The first of these is a conceptual review checklist, and that is included in the application for informational purposes, so that applicants will understand that they will be getting a copy of this form when they go to that first conceptual review, and sometimes when they, if they go for a second conceptual review, they may be getting another one. But this form is for use by the MBR, and it looks like this. It's also two pages, it's printed on that carbon, kind of carbon-type, carbonized paper, and this allows the MBR to provide immediate feedback in a written form to the applicants. There's, it's a supplement to the MBR minutes, but as you know, the minutes are not finalized until the following meeting after they've been incorporated into, into, into the meeting. until the following meeting after they've been incorporated into, into, into the minutes, and they're not, they're not made, they're not publicly available until that meeting when the MBR reviews the minutes and approves their minutes from the previous meeting. This provides a simple checklist with yes or no answers about whether the applicant has submitted the information they need to submit, whether, whether they have been considering different issues of neighborhood compatibility, privacy, view corridors, site topography and grading, really basic known resources, for example, if there's a creek on the property with riparian habitat that they would, that they need to be respecting, and size and scale, architectural style, et cetera. And these are issues, these are all items that the MBR is looking at in order to make their findings on a project. And so, if they've got yeses for all of these things, and it says they're moving, they're moving in the right direction on the product, if their project, if there are some nos in different areas, there's a place for notes, the MBR makes notes about what still needs to be submitted or what needs to be addressed. And this immediate feedback is then given to the applicant right there that day. They tear off the yellow sheet and hand the yellow sheet to the applicant, the white original sheet goes into the MBR file so that when a planner is assigned to the project, they also can get a copy of this. And everybody's on the same page with what was that, that initial feedback from the MBR. And there's, there's also a place for the BAR to check off at the bottom of the sheet whether this project needs to come back for a second conceptual review, or whether it's ready to go on to preliminary or final, or both.
Commissioner Overall.
Ms. Harris, I have a question. We had a case that came before the commission last month. And I'm trying to see what the applicability is of this to decisions that we might have to make. I understand its relationship to the MBR. But when we have a case appealed, as we did, that was denied preliminary, never gained conceptual, am I correct that, that our commission would have to consider exactly these same pieces of information? Is it not, if it's not applicable, I'd like to understand why not?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Overall, I think what you're asking is, in the context of a BAR appeal, would you have to consider the BAR's comments on conceptual? I don't think you, I don't think there's any formal process that you need to go through to consider those comments. I think it's informative as to why the BAR reached the decision at preliminary to deny it, but I don't think you're bound to it. You review de novo actions of the BAR. So, I think it's just additional information for your commission to consider to help you understand where the, where the MBR was at in their deliberations.
Right.
Most importantly, this form is supposed to really help applicants understand what the MBR expects when it comes back the next time. We hear from applicants frustration, not just with the MBR, with all the BARs, about not really understanding what the BAR is looking for. And we hear from the BAR members, not just the MBR members, all of them, frustration that applicants don't seem to take their, that many applicants don't seem to take their direction, and they take small little steps toward the direction that the, that the BAR gave. And so, this is intended to be a tool that is very clear and that will allow staff and the MBR to basically not continue the review process until, until issues are addressed. But I think it has a benefit of helping you understand a bit more where the BAR thought process was at, if you, if and when you do see projects on appeal.
I think that's, that's helpful, and that probably should have been my second question. However, I was asking a little different question. When, since we hear something de novo, the thought process that goes into the MBR reviewing this at conceptual, would we not go through an almost identical process? I mean, we have to consider size, bulk and scale as well.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Overall, yes, you would. And you would need to do that based, you know, with your own independent judgment. But just like appeals that you receive of staff decisions, you don't consider those without any information. And so, I think this just provides a bit more information as to the thought process of the BAR, like our staff reports do on the thought process of staff.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I can just emphasize one other, or one aspect of what you would do under de novo appeal, and that is that you are required to make the same findings. So, you must look at the findings that the BAR makes and use all the information that you have to assist you in making those findings.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Commissioner Phillips.
Have one more slide, just one. So, the, so the applicant has a, has the same expectation of consideration and review from us in a de novo appeal as they had approaching BAR? Or is it, is it that they have a, a de novo appeal, but our review may well be different? I think it is different, I think we are different.
You are.
We are. I'm, I'm following up on Commissioner Overall's statement, and Commissioner Gottstinker and I were starting to debate this a bit. How much of the MBR hat do we need to wear for the applicant for this hearing to be, in fact, de novo? New and, and bringing in all the issues? Is that a question enough for you? Should I rephrase it? Do you know what I'm saying?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, I think I know what you're saying. I would say, you know, the BAR, the BAR and your commission are different bodies. And you are the appellate review body for the BAR. You don't have the same characteristics as the BAR members do. You happen to have a landscape architect on your BAR, you don't necessarily have a, you know, the full array of architects. So, you're reviewing it from your own perspectives, but you have to review it against the same findings that the BAR needed to make. And typically, an appellate body looks at the decision of the lower body or the lower decision maker and tries to figure out if they had a good basis to make their decision and if their findings can be upheld. Now, in some cases, it might be that simple, and you say, you know, this is very clear, and you uphold their decision. In other cases, you might go into more depth. It just, it kind of depends. But you don't have the same characteristics as the BAR, and so, your, your review will be a bit different.
We don't have the same expertise-
Technical expertise.
We don't have the same expertise, but we do have the same, we sit and, and make the same judgment.
Right, findings, correct.
Right.
With, with all of the information that's available to you.
Using, using the background that's been provided by the, the BAR, or the MBR in this case. Is that clear to you?
Well- Commissioner Phillips? When I went to law school, it seemed to me that we were instructed that de novo was a fresh hearing, a whole, not a, not, not a review, not, not to determine whether MBR was, exercised their discretion properly, but in fact, to hear it all again. That is different, and I think that's what Commissioner Gottstinker was arguing. And I was saying, maybe that isn't the hat we wear. Remember that discussion? Maybe it is the hat we wear, and maybe, I'm concerned, I'm concerned that the applicant is getting the due process they're entitled to. And if they're thinking a de novo hearing is available, then perhaps all of these 10 or 12 issues should be addressed by us, and not simply reviewed to see if they're, if, if MBR did it within their realm of professionalism.
Commissioner Gottstinker, if we could let Mr. Allen speak first.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, and members of the commission, I, I'll just answer the question directly. You do sit de novo. You bring to your decision independently all the information you have before you. You are not simply sitting, as Commissioner Phillips suggested, might have been suggested, but I didn't hear Ms. Black say that, as a review body to determine whether the MBR acted appropriately or not. You exercise your independent judgment. However, you apply the same findings. So, you, using all the evidence that is before you, must make each of the findings that the MBR made. You can accept their review on each of those findings, accept, you know, their expertise in making a call on some matter requiring expertise, or you may not. You can exercise-
As they would.
Just as they would. You are sitting, as Commissioner Phillips indicated, and as I think we've been saying all along, de novo. It is your review, you're simply putting on their hat. And maybe on occasion, you'll feel the lack of some of their expertise in making those calls, but nevertheless, you are put in that role and you must make those calls.
Ms., it, Mr. Allen, it would be fair to say, I assume, that we can take the recommendations of our MBR and say, without rehearing all those individual issues on size, bulk and scale, simply take their recommendations and say, we accept or don't accept this particular item. In other words, we don't have to go in and start looking at an analysis of a height of a particular structure. We can, but we're not, we're not required to. So, it's not an absolutely new hearing where we're hearing all the data again. I mean, it's, it's available, but we don't have to go through it, is that correct?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission-
Because I think that's where Commissioner Phillips was headed.
The evidence that is in the record, including the record of what the MBR did and any comments they made, is before you and may be used as part of your decision-making process. The extent to which you wish to deliberate or gather new information, whatever new information you hear in public comment and so on, is, is, you have to listen to the new information. But the extent to which you require new information is up to you.
Is our discretion, right.
And if you are comfortable with, with, you know, an area of information that only appears in the evidence through what the MBR did, fine. If you require more, or you hear more and you need to obviously use that in your decision, then that's part of your role too.
Thank you. Commissioner Gottstinker, did you have a question? And I, I should point out, I think maybe we're, I'm assuming we are going to have a retreat at some point, and maybe this would be a topic that we might want to get into more if we end up doing that. Because I know we are not quite on the same issue, this exact issue today. But with that said, Commissioner Gottstinker, do you have a, another question on this item?
Uh-
Subject.
Well, I did, but then, but what you just said was the question, and then was going to lead into what you, you just said, you know, which was that it does seem that our commission, you know, kind of, many of us are not really, have not been trained in, in land use and land use law, and, you know, we're just sort of, we're very much community members, you know, committed to the community, that it would be of value to this commission, for the entire commission, we have two new commissioners at this point in time, to actually sit down in a workshop environment. And in my opinion, it might be even valuable to have that be a public workshop, because there does seem to be many people in the community who have complaints about the process and the relationship of this, us to MBR, to the Monosito Association, to other organizations. We see it in the newspapers all the time, you know, so it does seem like it would be valuable to the public to be present to a workshop of that kind, so that everybody in the community is on the same page as to what the process and procedures and the documents or the umbrella in which we're all required to operate inside of, which was what I was going to point out, is that in the interchange between Commissioner Phillips and myself, and I apologize for being quite as vehement as I was when I came back on you, but it was my frustration of seeing that the commission didn't seem to quite understand what I thought we were doing, which was trying to make the findings that MBR would have to make, you know. And it didn't seem like everybody was quite on the same page about that, and, and so, that's, I think, why we're going back to that project inside this discussion. But that's all to say that I very strongly think that we need to have some sort of training and development inside of procedures and the law and our relationship to county council, all of that at this point in time. And the sooner the better, I think.
I have a suggestion, maybe we should finish this item and then have a little discussion about the retreat and what items we might like to direct staff that we are interested in addressing. But maybe move forward on the, the presentation that's in front of us first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, this discussion that you did start having, you know, based on this particular slide and our conceptual review checklist leads into the next slide and actually the last slide of my presentation on the MBR subcommittee. And that's a new form that actually lists out the findings that the MBR is supposed to make. And so, and these are the findings that then your commission would be making if, if an MBR decision is appealed to you. And all this form does is reiterate the findings that are in the Monosito zoning ordinance that the MBR makes when they approve or deny a project that is before them. And in the past, we have still been putting a discussion of specific findings in the minutes when it's been a project where they ended up with a denial. And at, whenever that occurred, we always knew that that would be certainly of, of issue to the applicants. And so, we would be very careful to enumerate specifically which findings the BAR was looking at if they made a denial. By, by putting this form together, in addition to the fact that we still make the, make comments and findings in the minutes, by putting the findings right out there, clearly written out with a space for comments, when a project is approved, or if a project is denied, comments can be made about specific findings for approval or denial, particularly the findings where there may be some controversy within a neighborhood, because sometimes a project is approved that neighbors still have, may have an issue with. And, and so, by enumerating and explaining specifically their reasoning on this, on this form, it just puts it in an additional place, in addition to the minutes that we record and that are approved by the MBR, it just adds that additional information for the record, which then helps clarify the reasoning behind a decision. So, again, all this, all this does is it does provide that additional information. And then, in the situation, if a project is appealed to your planning commission, you have additional information on the record that you can refer to when you look at a project. And that actually concludes my presentation on the MBR subcommittee work.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Span is here, and I don't know if he had anything he wanted to add in terms of this particular discussion or any input as to how it's going with the MBR.
I think, two things, I want to thank the community, the MPC, the MBR members, staff. This was a difficult process in terms of time and commitment. I think the, the underlying theme here, and we're seeing it already, and a few times you've used this, these forms, is that the burden's on the applicant to bring us complete information. I think the unexpected consequence, I don't know if it's, it's probably not a consequence, but it's a good thing that's occurred, is that as an MBR member, we are put to the test to be, to do more of our job that we're set out to do. These forms force us more, to be more alert, to be more cognizant, to be, understand projects, ask the deeper questions at an earlier time in the process, and I think that's- And I think that's a good result and something that I think is going to be helpful to the community. These forms aren't perfect. They're something that's a work in progress. We're looking for feedback. I'm getting feedback already from my colleagues in the, in the community. Things that I think are important, I bring to staff. Things that I don't, I take notes on and I discuss with the members of the MBAR at the meetings. And hopefully, within six months, we'll review all this, and if there's changes that we think need to be made, I think that'll be helpful. And again, I just want to thank everybody who's been as part of this processing. It's going to be a good thing in the long run.
Thank you, Mr. Span. I do have a question of Ms. Harris. I noticed, and we hadn't seen these documents before today, so I was struggling a little bit with them, but I see the submittal requirements for structures for review. We have two slightly different versions in the two packages. Because the one we have is the, what looks like a package that's handed out to applicants, and the other one is some of the material that's the background. And I just wondered if you could comment, because I noticed the particular new, the findings, this checklist, this one, is that included in the material that the applicants get, or is that, that one excluded?
Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, I'll clarify a little bit. With the findings, when we put the, when we updated the actual application that we're handing out, what we did is, we worked within the, within the framework of the existing application and, let's see, page six of the application is actually the list of the findings for approval. And on the standard county-wide application, it listed all of the findings that could be made and they, for the different zoning ordinances in the county. So it was kind of all encompassed, and the order was actually not the same order that was in the zoning ordinance. And so what we did essentially is we just listed the findings as they're listed in the zoning ordinance, so it follows the format of the zoning ordinance. And in the application packet, we didn't show the form, because we just showed what those findings are. And then the form is just for the use of MBAR. It's the same language, but it provides the check off a place for comments on those findings.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Ms. Harris, on page three of the, the application, Montecito Board of Architectural Review Structure, it's, it states that applicants are responsible for contacting these applicable review bodies. And Burnham Wood is mentioned as the only one. Is that because there are restrictive covenants there that require, and should that review body be inconsistent with MBAR? How is that resolved? I would think there were others in Montecito with a review interest.
I have a feeling this list is not exclusive.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, I think, and I, and I'm guessing a bit here, so I always hesitate to guess on the record. I think that the, the review bodies that are listed here are the ones that do require, under their homeowners association requirements, review prior to the county's approval process. We don't implement that, but we try to advise people of those review bodies. And so I think that's why it's a very, very short list, because these are the ones, the reason I'm surmising this is because of Hope Ranch and Hollister. I know they require that, that their homeowners go through their process before pulling a permit. We don't enforce it, but we like to let people know. So I think that's why it's a very short list.
Yeah, likely Commissioner Phillips is, you know, we, we know that Innisbrook requires review, and that's not on the list.
That is true.
And then why would South County and Central County be in this?
They probably shouldn't be in this packet that's just for the MBAR.
So it's not, it's not meant to be a definitive list. Commissioner Gottsenger?
Well, I mean, I think you just mentioned it. I mean, and I was going to ask Chairman Span this question, is that Innisbrook, Los Entradas does have its own review board, and at least in the time that I was on MBAR, we always expected to have a letter prior to us signing off on the project. Is that no longer the case, Mr. Span? I mean, I think it still is, you know.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Gottsenger, not only Innisbrook, there's quite a few homeowners associations in Montecito. And our position has always been, and it came from staff, and I think it's correct, it is not our duty to police that, although we like to advise applicants. Typically, when a project comes before the planning commission, an applicant is required to submit a title report. And typically, a title report will list your CCNRs, and the homeowners associations are usually established on those kind of things. We don't go that deep. So the onus is actually put onto the staff. We try to, we try to advise all the applicants of those kind of things. And typically, if applicants are new to the community, they'll get that through their real estate transaction through escrow. But, so the question came up, do we list all of them? I think there's 10 I can think of that, or do we not list any? We really weren't sure how to handle this. We left this up to staff.
Well, I know that there's, I mean, there's like 26 or 28 homeowners associations besides the Montecito Association inside of Montecito, but not all of those have active review, architectural review committees.
There's about 10 that we see consistently, Commissioner Gottsenger, that's what I was saying.
Really?
Yes.
You know, well, the thing is, I mean, I guess where I'm, where I'm left by listing one and not listing the others, by omission, it leads one to believe, oh, well, I don't live there, I don't have to even go looking to see. That's the problem with only listing one, that I see. It's misleading to the applicants if we're trying to provide them with something.
Director Black?
Mr. Chair and members of the Commission, I think this is a really good point, and I think actually it's better to be less specific than more specific in this particular instance, because nobody at the county enforces this. We don't enforce it either, either at a staff level, because this is a, these are private groups that have their own rules that we don't, you know, we don't enforce. It's, we like to let people know that they exist, but I think, I think just a general statement that there may be local design review groups in your community, and you should contact them, is probably the best way to approach this, so that we don't leave anybody out and we don't set an expectation that we're monitoring this or requiring it. Because that's been a very, very touchy issue in the past. So I think this was a helpful discussion, because I hadn't even noticed this page before.
Yeah, I think we may want to modify that section. Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. For clarification, I think Pepper Hill is in Montecito, and.
Now, there's another Pepper Hill down.
Well, but that's Des O'Neil has his law office downtown, dear, and, I'm sorry, Commissioner Gottsenger. And, but it is the Pepper Hill Association, and they are currently, someone in Pepper Hill, my sister who lives on Pepper Hill, is currently involved in an appeal to the, to our commission, having gone through MBAR, the NOVICS. So it does work its way here to us, even though it's a private association. My apologies for calling you, dear.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If, may I direct this to Chairman Span?
Of course.
Should a homeowners association opine that the project that you're reviewing is not compatible, how is that letter viewed?
Very heavily.
It is?
Unless, and there's, it doesn't happen, but on a rare occasion, a community letter, an association might recommend things that are not in compliance with the community plan or their actual ordinance. Doesn't happen often, and at those times, we then ask the applicant to go back and explain that to the association. I might even give the association executive director or a president a call. Very rarely does that happen. Most of the time, the associations that we've seen are pretty much in compliance with what the community plan wants and sees, and we like to hear that. We want neighbors to get involved early on. We'd rather that discussion happen outside of our purview and come to us with a project that, that everybody can live with.
Yeah, I don't recall that we've seen you say, this is in compliance with the community plan and all the other ordinances and regulations, but this community CCNRs don't permit this. I haven't seen that. But that could well happen.
I think the biggest, the biggest time that happens, Commissioner Phillips, is second stories. Quite a few CCNRs limit, for view purposes, for other reasons, single stories, whereas the ordinance doesn't. That's probably the biggest time we see a discrepancy between the zoning ordinance and the CCNRs.
Director Black?
Mr. Chair, just to be very clear, your staff would not recommend denial based upon private CCNRs that prohibited second stories. And it has recently come up at the, at the county planning commission. We might recommend denial of a second story or a second story element because of neighborhood compatibility, but not because the CCNR is prohibited. And that's really a private matter that the, that the homeowners have to work out with the applicant.
But the determination as to compatibility would be made by MBAR, not, not because the association said so.
Right.
So your view is that you would permit a second story and the homeowner needs to work it out with the community?
We may permit a second story.
You may, I see.
And we, actually, we have.
Thank you. Maybe this would be the time to open this up for public comment, unless there's additional presentation from staff.
So, Mr. Chair, this was just part one of three parts to this presentation. So if you want to take public comment on this first part, that's fine, and then we can go into the second.
I forgot we had at least one section left. Ms. Pijo, I'm sorry to.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. The next subcommittee group that we're going to overview today is the subcommittee that worked on the compatibility sections in the Montecito architectural guidelines. This group included Claire Gottsenger, that's on your commission, Dawn Nolte from MBAR, Bill Palladini and Susan Keller. And the reason for this group getting together was to look at all of the factors that go into determining compatibility of a project in the area, and looking at it in context. There was a view that, there's been a lot of attention paid to the floor area ratio component of compatibility, and one of the first things that we did in our group was to take a look at the other factors and try and determine if we thought the discussions had been somewhat out of balance, and spending a lot of time and effort on floor area ratios, but sometimes at the expense of some of the other size, bulk, and scale issues. And so this committee concluded that it was important that BAR look at all of the factors going into compatibility, and actually, that was independently the same conclusion that this procedures group came to. And so jointly, it resulted in that check sheet system that Julie just described. So it was interesting that two different subcommittees came to the same conclusion, that they wanted to make sure and address all of the factors in the guidelines and keep them in balance. That being said, one of the things that we also focused on was a way to make it easier to look at the floor area ratios of surrounding properties. Up until this point, each individual applicant was kind of reinventing the wheel and doing their own survey of a neighborhood and going to the assessor's department and obtaining square footage information. And what we wanted to do was going to streamline that and have that kind of information more readily available, and thus maybe not taking up so much of a level of effort in trying to find what that information was. So what we did in our department is we funded actually an intern program and had someone go through and pull all the best up-to-date records from the assessor's department, our permit files and our BAR files, and compile them into a database, and to some extent, graphically display them on our photomapper system. So the result of that was some new additional layers, we call them, added to our internal mapping system. So when we pull up maps of Montecito and click on a certain parcel, we can get additional square footage data that was not previously available in that photomapper system. And then, along with that, we prepared two spreadsheets. The first one is actually taking the information that was done when the guidelines were developed with the general plan advisory committee, and taking that and putting it into kind of an up-to-date spreadsheet format that we could search and more easily use, basically just making it modern. That information was an exhaustive effort, primarily of Bob McGreblean, when he was working with the G-PAC, and they were formulating just the final parts of the Montecito architectural guidelines. And at that time, led by Bob's work, they actually went to the assessor, and in 1993, got all the best up-to-date available information they could on structural development on every parcel in Montecito. So we took that, and we've now updated that and put it into our kind of modern format. And then with that as a basis, what we then did is, we created another spreadsheet that took all the permits that have been approved since 1993 and updated all that square footage information. And there were about 1,700 permits, which is an interesting little factoid, I suppose, that we actually went in and updated since 1993. And so what we did is, we created a spreadsheet that has a number of columns, more than 30 columns, in its entire full-size view, that has information on attached garages, detached garages, accessory structures, et cetera. And then we built from there some additional formulas that would make it easier for the public, for BAR, and for the planning commission, to find out what our most up-to-date information is on square footage and on properties surrounding any subject application. The little chart on the bottom is just another fun fact, that, you know, across the way, you kind of like get these little, little, interesting little facts that come out when you're doing this kind of work. But just in case you wanted to know, there are 4,349 parcels in Montecito, and there's 3,010 single-family dwellings. So just interesting counts for fun.
Excuse me, what was the number that you just said of, of single-family dwellings?
3,010.
Thank you.
On this slide, what I'm showing you is something that comes out of our photomapper system. It's got the aerial part taken away, and it's called a white layer, and it shows parcels in Montecito. It doesn't capture the entire of the area in this screenshot, but it gives you an idea of some of the different areas that we looked at in pulling together this information. So what we tried to do with this database and this map that coordinates with it, is take these areas within the blue boundary lines. And these are some areas where, in the past, it has been pretty commonly thought of, that this is, you know, an area that has particular common features that would kind of pull together those parcels bounded by the same major streets and, and topography and that sort of thing. And so one of the things we did in the Excel databases, if you didn't want to have to look at the entire of the Montecito community plan area, you could also just print out subsections of Montecito and get the parcels and the floor area ratios for those. And so we came up with some of these boundary lines as a starting point. That's not to say that that has to be the area any applicant uses in looking at square footages, but it's a starting point. And the point would be that it's a more usable subset, and then the Montecito Board of Architecture Review or Planning Commission, if it came to you, could say, okay, that looks fine, but I really want you to extend it two streets over to the west or the north, or something like that. There's full flexibility in the Excel database that we came up, but we thought some system of sub-areas could be useful. This is a screenshot of the database that I'm talking about. This is a screenshot of the database that I'm talking about that goes along with that map. And it's very flexible. What this is showing you is just a few of the columns. It probably has two or three times as many fields in the entire database. What we tried to do is look ahead a little bit. So our original goal was to look at the square footages that go into calculating floor area ratios for a parcel, but knowing that there has been some discussion in other Montecito subcommittees about potentially in the future looking at other types of accessory structures or maybe total build-out on a lot. What we did now is we just went ahead and added a whole lot of fields so that we could keep updating it with whatever information we get on any of those types of structures, even if it's for future use and not necessarily for calculating the floor area ratio according to today's definitions. Here's some of the kind of information that would be most commonly retrieved from this database. The residential floor area ratio, square footage, garage and accessory structures, basements, second unit information. And then also, because of the equations we've put in for any given lot, we can determine what the recommended floor area ratio is for that particular parcel, and then also if the existing structures exceed that. So we can tell all of that from this database. The easiest way to use this database is, what we have done, and I passed one out to you this morning, is that large binder that I passed out earlier. We have prepared a number of these printouts of the database and of the maps that go with them. And what we have done is decided to leave one in each of the hearing rooms, so there'll always be one available for the Montecito Board of Architectural Review and for the Planning Commission. There's one available at the counter, so when an applicant comes in, or anyone else for that matter researching a parcel in Montecito, they can avail themselves of this and they can make copies of the pages they're most interested in. They can find it on these index maps and get some of the surrounding information, and we can copy those for them at our permit intake appointments. When someone comes in with an application for Montecito, the intake planner will alert the applicant to this document and ask them if they would like copies of those pages as they get started in their permit path. We are going to update this on a continuous basis. We have assigned a staff person to maintain the database. You reviewed the statistical table that will now be printed on plans as they come in, as Julie was talking about, the procedures. That same statistical basis, we coordinated with the Excel spreadsheet so they match. So when that statistical table is filled out on a Montecito project, a copy of that then will go to the planner assigned to update the database. As soon as the project is approved, they'll take that information, they'll update it for that parcel. There's gaps here and there in the database right now. We got all the available information we could possibly find, but any updates and any corrections that anyone alerts us to, we'll add in. We have a notation for when it was updated and what the source of that update was, and we'll keep track of those. And actually, for that number of parcels and permits that there are in Montecito, it's probably 90% correct. And the rest we'll update and correct as we go. So this was a big effort of this group. I think it's a terrific streamlining measure, and I think that it will make everybody's job a little bit easier.
Excellent. Commissioners?
Yeah, I would just like to take the opportunity, I mean, I did work on the subcommittee, but I really want to acknowledge the staff's participation and the staff, Santa Barbara County staff's support in getting this project done. I mean, as you can see from that binder, it was mammoth amounts of work. And I think, you know, I think the fact that I like, I'm really happy that like now it's going to be a public document. It's at the zoning counter. It's available in the hearing rooms. It is a resource so that applicants do not any longer have to go keep paying their dollar and paying their dollar and paying their dollar, which promoted a kind of an apples- oranges sort of situation. It's like, nobody on MBAR, having been there for the number of years I was there, you never knew, you never really knew if everybody was on the same page. And so I just think that this is like a huge leap forward in what I think, what I would call process improvement. I mean, this really comes, I mean, the county has been looking continually at process improvement, and I think in Montecito, this is a huge leap into the next century as far as process improvement. So I just really want to thank all of you for the work that you did and whatever you had to do to make it happen. Thanks.
Other comments, Commissioners? I'm also very impressed, especially the photomapper and how this data is accessible. Not only the binders, but just its interactive nature is, I think, very, very exciting. Commissioner Overall?
I just have a question, whether this has actually been able to be used at the MBAR at this point or by staff.
Commissioner Barrett, Commissioner Overall, I believe, I think we saw it one time at this, since this started. I can only remember seeing the statistical tables on one project so far.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Overall, it's just going to take a little bit of time to get that consistent statistical data. When we talked to the MBAR about changing the application supplemental requirements, we all acknowledged that we don't want to catch people in the middle of drawing plans and change requirements on them. So it'll take a bit of time. We've also been reluctant to use this information before we kind of presented it to the Planning Commission. I know we used it last month at your request, but, you know, we wanted people to understand where this data came from and that it really, it isn't new, it's just a different way of compiling existing data, which was a huge effort. We tortured an intern and ultimately hired her, so that was her reward. But it was a big effort, but it really is just a compilation of data. And the boundaries that are, the subareas that are shown are really just convenient ways of displaying the data and can be modified as any decision-maker sees fit.
Commissioner Burrows?
You may have said this in the report, and I missed it. Is any thought being given to putting that information online?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Burrows, what we can't do is, we can't make photomapper available online because it's a licensed tool that the county uses. So unfortunately, we can't put that online, but we probably could. My computer people may be screaming right now because I don't know if this will bomb our system or not. We will look into whether or not we can put the data component of it online. It's going to be a bit tricky to keep it up to date because there's now three different systems that it would be in, but we'll look at it and see if we can. At least it's available at the counters, and if it would be convenient and the Montecito Association would like to have a copy as well and endeavor to keep it up to date, we'd be happy to put one out at Montecito Hall.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I note that basement square footage is a, was a measurable component. Can you tell me what we're to use that for?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Phillips, I think June explained, we collected data in just about every way you possibly could. Right now, I don't think you necessarily need to use it for anything, but we just wanted, since we were going through this project, we just wanted to segment the data as specifically as we could so that if we wanted, if somebody asked, how many basements are in Montecito, or what's the square footage of basements in Montecito? I don't know why anybody would ask that, but in case they did, we could come up with that. It just wasn't that much more work to do, and so in the event you want to query something in the future, it would be there and available.
Excellent. Commissioner Gottstenger?
Well, I think Ms. Black is correct. I mean, when we, when the subcommittee was working on this, and as we all know, even Commissioner Phillips knows, there's been a question about the proliferation, or at least the perception that there's a proliferation of large basements. So now we've got a place to begin to gather that data in black and white. So maybe it's not a problem, you know, but maybe we'll see a year, two years from now that it is a problem, and we'll have the information to go back to. So, you know, with June's help and, what was her name, that intern, what was her name?
Tammy Weber.
Tammy, oh, she was so great. She is so great. We just kind of started, I started looking to the future, you know. I started looking at like, okay, what are the, what are the things that I could see that we may want to deal with in the planning process in the future? And so let's, now that I've got an opportunity to get this all down in black and white, let's just put it all down. And then in the future, we'll have the information and we won't have to, you know, I mean, the General Plan Advisory took over a year and a half to do the original database. But now we have a way of putting it all down, and then we, we or future planning commissioners can then begin to look and see, well, is there a problem?
Yeah. I think that's excellent. Increasingly, I think we're seeing that size has immediate and long-term impact, and it's hard not to include a basement. That is part of size. Interesting.
Mr. Span, I see you'd like to address this.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I just want to follow up real quickly. The other, the other thing that we do and you do on this side of the table is, as policymakers, is you, we at times and you and our board supervisors eventually will change ordinance language. The most recent one I can think of is the building height. Those of, those architects in the community believe, and this is a good way for us to see if our theorem is correct, that there'll be a jump now in the amount of basements because of the way that we now calculate building heights. And we may not have thought about that, or the policymakers may not have thought about that, but it's certainly one of those results, outcomes kind of a thing. And this is a great way for us to see if that's correct. So it's a good tool for us designers, architects, as well as policymakers.
I'll just make a comment to staff on this portion, which is, you know, we struggle with the quality of our information when we're looking at neighborhood compatibility, and I think this tool will get better and better for us to feel comfortable that we're comparing apples with apples and oranges and oranges when we go forward, because that's always been a struggle in the past, is our data good? And this is a long effort over a long period of time, and I think what you've done is really fabulous.
We do have one more part to our presentation this morning. This is the road encroachment subcommittee work, which is still ongoing. The work on the database is now concluded, but this particular subcommittee has not quite concluded its work yet, but I'll be giving you a progress report on what we're doing. This committee was made up of actually a pretty large number of people that met over several months, including Bob Collector, Tony Span, Dick Tilsher, Bob McGreblion, Jack Overall, Don Nolte, Jamie Brown. And then also, we had our representation from Planning Department and also from the Public Works Department. And we actually had several from Public Works Department that would attend these meetings. We have here with us today Eric Pearson, who's at the table, sitting alongside of Tony Span, and he can be available for some questions after the presentation if you would have questions directed to their encroachment division. Purpose of this particular subcommittee was kind of twofold. One was in recognition of some of the growing number of encroachments that community members were seeing in Montecito, particularly walls, hedges, or other major obstacles in what had been designed to be informal walking paths along the edge of the right-of-ways. But also, we saw right away that what we really needed to do as an initial step was to improve the process and the coordination between the Planning and Development and Public Works Department in the review and just passing of information back and forth about projects with the potential to encroach in right-of-ways. And that's primarily the set of steps that we are concluding right now are some of those process improvements that we think will go a long ways to addressing some of the issues that some of the community members brought forward to us. But just to give you just a little bit of background, since we're dealing with two departments, we're not only dealing with the Montecito Community Plan and the zoning ordinances, we're also dealing with the purview of the Public Works Encroachment Division, and their authority comes from the Streets and Highways Code and some portions of our general county code, not necessarily the zoning ordinances. We have two different mandates that we're trying to coordinate in the review of encroachments into Montecito right-of-ways. So that added a layer of complexity because the missions of each of those are slightly One of the things that I wanted to just share with you in understanding this right-of-way is how right-of-ways work in many areas of the county, particularly also in Montecito. And so this diagram is my feeble attempt to explain that to you. The first thing to know is, in this particular parcel, which actually isn't in Montecito, it's somewhere else unknown in the county, the yellow lines indicate the parcel boundaries. The red line indicates a right-of-way line that affects that property. So everything that's in the yellow boundary line is subject to Planning Department permits and the zoning ordinances and the requirements for permits or exemptions in the zoning ordinance. Everything that is north or east of the red line represents everything that's under the jurisdiction of the encroachment division and requires encroachment permits for landscaping or other activities, driveway cuts and whatnot in that area. So it's clear that those two jurisdictions exist. But what happens beyond that are these certain circumstances. If you look at the northern, I don't know where the later, yeah, thank you. If you look at the northern portion of that property, you'll see that between the red right-of-way line and the yellow property line, there's a strip of area that actually is subject to the jurisdiction of both groups. It both, it requires, if the project is large enough, a permit from the Planning Department. It also requires an encroachment permit from the encroachment division. That's where we need a lot of coordination between our two departments because if not, the Planning Department or BAR may be reviewing a project with some landscaping components that may be perfectly compatible purposes of land use, but may not meet the standards that the encroachment division needs it to meet for their purposes. So what we're trying to do and have done is gotten closer in coordination on those kind of circumstances so that we can both review a set of plans and make our comments before one agency or the other ends up granting their permit. Then you have another circumstance, which is to the east, where you see the right-of-way line and the yellow property line are co-terminus. This has its own interesting effect depending on where you are in the county. If you're outside the coastal zone, there is no planning jurisdiction beyond that yellow property line. That entire right-of-way to the east is only the jurisdiction of county roads and their encroachment division. We can't issue a planning permit that extends beyond that property line, outside the coastal zone. But because of the coastal plan and the particular way that the ordinance works in the coastal zone, even roadways are zoned and subject to permits in the coastal zone. the coastal zone, even roadways are zoned and subject to permits in the coastal zone. So if you're in the coastal zone, that same parcel in the coastal zone would also have joint jurisdiction between planning and its zoning ordinances, and the encroachment division, and its encroachment permit process. So in the coastal zone, that would provide another area where we need to be more closely coordinated. And I think that you probably all remember there was some of that that came into play, say, with some of the Biltmore improvements, because it's coastal zone, that road in front of the Biltmore actually was subject to coastal permits. So that's the encroachment right-of-way lesson today. It took a while for us to actually figure all of that out in the committee. Okay. So here are some of the things that we have either already instituted as improvements to our coordination, or within the next month, we'll have in place. Currently, Public Works is now sending encroachment application information to our zoning counter for their review, to see if it affects anything that would be part of our permit jurisdiction, or if there's already an approved permit that this new encroachment might conflict with. So that's already happening. Public Works has been making their encroachment applications available to the public, and groups such as Montecito Association or other homeowners groups who may wish to see what kind of applications are being filed in their area. A requirement that will be in place probably in less than a month from now is, we are adding a new submittal requirement, and we decided that this was such a good idea that came out of the Subcommittee that we would apply it to all county permits, not only Montecito. We are now going to be asking that right-of-way and edge of pavement be shown on abutting streets when someone is filing for a permit application. So at intake, for example, with that information on the site plans, the intake planners, when a project could come in, could see, here's the right-of-way, oops, you know, you may need to get an encroachment permit. Here's the information and the phone number. Go visit the encroachment division office and work with them on their application process. And at the same time that it does that, if there is development in that area shown on the site plan, we will be forwarding a set of plans, we'll ask for an additional set of plans in that case, and we'll forward an additional set of plans to the encroachment division, so that they can see the application permit that we're working on and that our BAR is going to be reviewing, to give them an opportunity to tell us whether it may or may not be an issue for them before we get, say, a preliminary Board of Architectural Review approval on the project. And we're also planning, within the next month, to have a joint staff training between the enforcement, the encroachment division, and the Planning Department, so we can go through each of our mandates under the law, discuss them with each other, and get everybody up to date on these new procedures. And I probably should have mentioned in the, in the prior presentation, that we've been having a series of small trainings on each of these Subcommittee topic areas as we get to, you know, kind of a conclusion of a, a major milestone. So we have, we have had a training, for example, on the Montecito database and some of the new procedures form, and we've been, you know, incorporating all the staff that is involved in issuing those kinds of permits into those trainings. There's other potential future efforts that could come out of this right-of-way Subcommittee work. We actually have a list of those items that we have also asked County Council to review, and we're beginning to get some initial feedback on what those items would take in terms of changes to any guidelines, ordinances, portions of the county code and that sort of thing. And so, we're going to decipher what level of effort it would take on each of these. These all go beyond procedures and coordination. And for each of those, we'll then be able to determine, you know, what level of effort or budget is required in order to accomplish them. But some of those really have to do with the standards that are used for issuing encroachment permits, and how closely that we could incorporate, for example, Montecito Community Plan goals in with the standards for issuing an encroachment permit. And it's a, it's a, involved enough legal question that it's taken a little bit of time to sort that out. We could, in the future, create a reference list, or a great map of where the right-of-ways and edge of pavement are for properties in Montecito. Right now, what we have learned is that you can get a piece of the information from the assessor maps. Sometimes, they don't always show the right-of-way line. You can get a piece of it from our photo mapper. You can see aerials where you can actually see pavement, if there isn't too much in the way of tree coverage. But what we might be able to do is work with the surveyor and some of our mapping people, or maybe work with getting some additional aerial flyovers that would, you know, be done for that specific purpose, and get more accurate information on exactly where the right-of-ways and pavement lines are in Montecito, and then have that map. And then that would make it easier for applicants who don't have to, on their own, do that independent research about where the right-of-way line is that we're going to be asking them to show. But for right now, we'll ask them to show it, and we'll ask them to state their source. That's what we'll do for right now. This would be a project that would definitely have some budget implications, if we were to pursue. The next thing we could do is come up with a methodical inventory of the encroachments in Montecito, determine which ones have permits, which ones don't, and the type of encroachment that they are. Because then we could analyze the scope and the trend of what's happening with different types of encroachments. That would be more labor-intensive, and so also would be a budget implication. We could look at different methods to strengthen the enforcement ability for encroachment permits. And then, the out, in terms of outdoor lighting, in the area of the right-of-ways, if you have a wall on the right-of-way, a lot of times, there's, you know, the lights or the light posts with it. And so, one thing that we'll be needing to do in our follow-up discussions on our committee is to discuss more how we should deal with lighting in right-of-way areas, because there's spillover and night pollution issues in there. And we know that there's plenty of examples, perhaps in other jurisdictions, where they've dealt with this, but we haven't gotten to that part of the specific discussion in our Subcommittee yet. In addition to that, there'll be some educational efforts. The Montecito Association has offered, at some point, when we have all of these items in place, at least the short-term items in place, that they could do some public outreach to the community of their own, to inform them about encroachment permits and when you need them, and, and that need to be consistent with, you know, the community plan as well. And then also, we will be preparing some up-to-date handouts to have at the counter, so when a project comes into intake, there's a flyer you can hand an applicant that has the name, the contact phone number, and whatnot, if they need, if we think that they need an encroachment permit. So that's the work that we have accomplished on the right-of-way committee. We continue to meet, but meanwhile, these procedural coordination steps are, are in motion.
Thank you, Ms. Pujol. That's a, that's a nice presentation. Commissioners, do we have questions on this item? Commissioner Phillips?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Ms. Pujol, you spent a lot of time talking about encroachment permits. Why would, why would the county ever issue an encroachment permit?
But I think that's a perfect segue. I think I'll turn your attention, perhaps, to Eric Pearson from the encroachment division. Maybe he can explain the basic parameters and their health and safety mandates for encroachments into the road right-of-way.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips. Basically, in Montecito, most, most of the property lines, as I understand it, go to the center of the road. So the people actually, it's more like the situation where they own, they pay taxes all the way to the center of the road. The county owns an easement. It's called right-of-way, but right-of-way can be held in two forms. One is a easement over a property. And the other way it can be held, it, right-of-way can be held is in fee, where the county actually owns, it'd be like an ownership. So there's fee, fee right-of-way, and then there's easement right-of-way. In Montecito, and it varies, like Summerlin, we, we own all the roads. In fee, in Montecito, we have more easements. And every, and it has to be researched to see if you have a fee or easement. But basically, this, the ordinance, excavation ordinance requires us, for anybody doing work in a county easement, to get a encroachment permit. So if somebody's trenching to put a new water line in, a new sewer line, or just working in the road, and the encroach, those are all encroachment permits for utilities. Also, I should mention, the easement is just, is for public travel, and also for public utilities. So you have an easement, and generally in Montecito, it varies from 40 to 60 feet wide. It's not just for the roadway and the traveling public, pedestrians, cars, vehicles, horses. It's also for public utilities.
So the, the encroachment, an encroachment permit would never be issued wherein that right-of-way, be it easement or fee, was blocked to pedestrian traffic?
That would be a goal. Montecito's a little, little different in some aspects that we would, that is, one of the goals in the Montecito Community Plan, to maintain, but access for pedestrians.
Okay. My second question is, it seems to me the impact problem is not the encroachment permits that, that you've identified, but the result of no permits at all, fences, walls, vegetation. And these easements are to benefit the entire community. And I would think any public person, any person in the community has standing to, to sue, to open up these rights of ways, to permit that, to permit the enjoyment of the easement granted the county to the community. Is that, is that true, Mr. Counsel?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Phillips, I was hoping you wouldn't ask, ask me that question regarding standing to enforce use of a right-of-way. I am not at all sure that a member of the public has that standing, but I honestly do not know. Perhaps--
Well, we will find out.
--someone else does. We will. And I will get back to you.
Director Black?
Mr. Chair, that may be one of the legal issues that we're looking into, but I, I just wanted to, to go back to this graphic to explain why people might want, and why Public Works might issue an encroachment permit for things other than driveway cuts and utility lines and, et cetera. You can see, in Montecito, Mr. Pearson indicated that a lot of the, the easements or the right-of-way extends 40 to 60 feet. But as you know, none, almost none of the roads do, if, maybe, maybe none. So you have this situation where you've got a strip of land adjacent to pavement, and people just naturally want to use that, whether that strip of pavement is, sorry, that, that strip between the pavement and their property line is actually on their property, like this situation, or isn't a part of their property. So that's where, where the tension really comes in, is there's sort of this no man's land on properties that, that people just generally, naturally want to use and improve. And some of those uses and improvements are consistent with the other uses of that right-of-way, some landscaping, because landscaping requires an encroachment permit technically as well. It might be compatible, but people tend to push that, and they push walls out into the right-of-ways with and without permits, encroachment permits. So I didn't want you to be under the impression that everything other than utility easements and driveways that you see in right-of-ways are, are unauthorized encroachments. They aren't. Many of them are authorized.
Yeah, that is correct. We have issued permit, encroachment permits for walls and landscaping, because like, like Diane said, you might have anywhere from 15 to 20 feet from the edge of pavement that would basically be issued no encroachment permits to do landscaping or other, would be, I guess, dirt and weeds.
Well, so-- So that is not no man's land. An easement is a burden on a property that the county enjoys, and by virtue of your enjoyment, my enjoyment.
But, but Mr. Chair and, and Commissioner Phillips, I guess what I was trying to point out is the, the tension, the tension between public use and, and the width of right-of-ways, and people's natural inclination to want to improve that property, to make it more beautiful. Because the county, the county does not go out and maintain these right-of-ways in a way that I think most property owners would like them to be maintained. And this kind of leads to one of June's points in her PowerPoint on potential future efforts, and it's actually the very first one. And that is, do we need some work in clarifying standards for approval of encroachment permits? And I think we clearly do, both in Montecito and throughout the county, because this, this issue definitely comes up. So we're not oblivious to, you know, the tension between the public's need to use this right-of-way and private property owner's desire to, to beautify them and sometimes use them. So that's why it's on that first, first item of, of potential future efforts, and it's probably one that should be gotten to sooner rather than later, and does implicate some of these legal issues.
And cease and desist orders.
Well, the enforcement is also on that list, and, and it's something that we're also looking into. So this issue is not entirely resolved. We're just trying to come and tell you what we've been able to do, and tell you what we're looking at doing.
Thank you. I think it's appropriate we open up the public comment period. Yeah. Director Black has suggested we take a, a break, and I would like, that probably would make sense. How long would you like? Five minutes, then. We'll be back in five minutes and be ready for a public comment. I have one speaker slip, but if anybody else wishes to address us, let us know. Eager's briefing, and I'm not sure, Director Black, how long you think that item will take.
Well, Mr. Chair, we had put on the agenda 45 minutes.
Right.
But it, it kind of depends on how many comments we have from the Commission and from public. It's not, if, if you had a chance to look at the memo, it's not the easiest bit of information to absorb. I think we can walk you through it. And we've also, in the PowerPoint, highlighted some things that we think are, maybe not points to fix, but at least points to think about--
Right.
--in, in noticing. So I, I'm hoping we can help guide your discussion some, but, you know, it just took me a while to absorb the chart myself.
Well, from a timing standpoint, then, I would assume that we will probably handle items three through six after lunch. So if there's anybody here on those items, I think you can assume, safely assume, that we will do those probably at around 1:00. I mean, that's just a target.
I think that's probably a good estimate.
Okay. If there are any other questions of staff, I'm going to open us up for public comment on this item, on the improved avail, data availability briefing. And I do have one request to speak from Bill Palladini of the Montecito Association.
Good morning. I'm Bill Palladini, President of the Montecito Association. Good morning. I'm Bill Palladini, President of the Montecito Association, Chairman, Barrick Commissioners. Just wanted to address a couple of things. I'll be brief. I know you're pressed for time. Just wanted to say that the Montecito Association is very pleased to see that these things are being implemented, that these tools for the MBR and on the neighborhood compatibility issues are coming to fruition. The association played an important role in working in the subcommittees on these issues. We helped fund, and Victoria Green, we think did an excellent job in actually formulating the forms, that, the checklist, et cetera, that MBR will be using. And what's most important about this is that I think it'll really provide a terrific service to the community. I think it'll help make MBR more efficient. It'll be very fair to applicants. I think it was pointed out that many applicants sometimes leave hearings, and I personally experienced this from attending hearings, without having a clear picture of what they're supposed to come back with or what the board actually objected. It's quantifiable on a sheet like this. And what that results in, and we saw this last year, is applicants coming back many, many times with obviously either misinformation or not having understood what they were asked to do. So we're very hopeful that all these things will benefit the community and help these agencies work in a better way. The other thing is with neighborhood compatibility, a huge amount of work went into this. I personally participated in it. I think June and her staff did a terrific job in formulating this. I haven't even had a chance to look at it, but just looking at the binder, it's, it's an amazing thing. And I really think, though, particularly from hearing the presentation, that this should also be very beneficial to MBR and to the Montecito Planning Commission. One last thing I wanted to talk about was the right of way. Those of you who saw my column last month in the Montecito Journal, I took the opportunity to address this very important community issue. I personally had a lot of input from people in the community about the problem. And with this Safe Rush to School Initiative, which seems to be picking up steam in our community, this is an important issue that needs to be addressed. And I just would encourage the community to understand what's involved in this issue, and, as I said in my column, become better informed about it as homeowners. So that's pretty much it. Just wanted to say how great it is that these things are being instituted, they're implemented is a better word, and my, my thanks to the staff and everyone who participated on behalf of the association. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the planning commission on this item? We'll probably want you to fill out a speaker slip after you address this.
I apologize for that. My name is Anthony Harbor, and I'm actually a new member of the Montecito Association. And my role on the, on the board of the Montecito Association is to observe what is going on with MBR every other week. But one of the questions I have, and it was brought out by Commissioner Phillips, was about the basement and its area. And then Chairman Span's comments about what that would do for the architects and that sort of thing. One of the things I'd be concerned about is that these basements become habitable spaces. Under the definition of what I understand a basement is, is a non-habitable space, and that would change the floor-air ratios and the way the new format is lined out. I think people are going to take advantage, and I just wanted to make a note of that for the record, that I am concerned, and I think we have to be aware of this for the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If there's no one else that wishes to address us, I'm going to close the public comment period on item one on our agenda. And Director Black, do you have any, anything else for us?
Mr. Chair, this is a workshop, so we're not looking for action from your commission. If you had any additional comments or suggestions for, for the staff, that would be helpful. If not, then I think we can move on.
Okay. I think we got through most of our comments as we did the individual items.
I think that was really helpful.
And I don't see anything additionally, so, excuse me.
I do have one comment. You mentioned just before we broke about the enforcement component related to right of way, and I did not see that as a, listed as an action item. I may have missed it, but I did see.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner, overall, it actually is. It's, it was the first item on the second page of future efforts, potential future efforts, strengthen Public Works enforcement of unpermitted encroachments.
Thank you. I'll hire you to read for me in the-
That's okay.
And, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, you had indicated that perhaps we could talk about workshop or training session, and may I suggest that we do that at the end of your agenda, so that we don't hold up other-
I think that would be just fine. Give us some additional time to also collect our thoughts between now and then, maybe over lunch, as to what items we might like to see placed on that agenda.
Great.
If there are no further comments, we'll finish this item and move on to our notification procedures briefing, item number two on our standard agenda.
And if we can just take a pause, I wouldn't even call it a break.
No problem.
Get ourselves set up.
You control me, as it turns out. You had power, you didn't-
Oh.
That doesn't work either.
Doesn't come on.
See, that's what, yeah.
No, Jeff just had-
Oh.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, thank you. We're, this is the second briefing of the day, and this briefing is a result of your commission's request and, I guess, your request and my offer to come back and walk through our noticing procedures in some detail and see if there are some improvements that we could make as we're considering other process improvement efforts at the county. Just wanted to refresh your memory as to what we have been working on and have accomplished, to sort of set a context. So in December, and these are all items that we've been working on in the context of our process improvement effort in the department. In December of 2005, the County of Santa Barbara created the zoning clearance process. Didn't apply in Montecito, but we created it and applied it to lots, development of lots following tract maps that had been approved since 2000. We didn't put that into the Montecito code, because you don't have very many tract maps, and it just didn't seem like a worthwhile endeavor to undertake. And when you do have tract maps, you typically don't have development plans associated with them. So you don't see the level of development that typically occurs in the county. But nonetheless, we did create the zoning clearance process, and that process is exactly the same as our land use permit process, except that public notice is not provided and an appeal path is not provided either. But in terms of staff review, it's exactly the same. In January of 2006, immediately following that zoning clearance process, we put some improvements for noticing into place. And we actually changed the way that we noticed land use permits. Up until that point in time, land use permits were posted on a project site at approval, and then a 10-day appeal period followed. And in January of 2006, we changed it so that the application of a land use permit was noticed to adjoining property owners or property owners within 300 feet, and we'll get into the details of that, so that people could avail themselves of the process and hopefully input into the process upfront instead of at the back end, when an appeal is really their only recourse. So that was a pretty major improvement. Unfortunately, that improvement has been proposed in the coastal zone, but it hasn't yet been approved by the Coastal Commission. And so it's led to, I think, some problems that we've seen recently, because the expectation is now that people receive notice upfront, but in the coastal zone, that doesn't uniformly happen. Then in April of 2007, just last month, actually, it was in March of 2007, and will happen earlier, probably next month, at the Board, we brought forward the zoning clearance process to your commission and to the County Planning Commission for land use, what are now processes, land use permits and coastal developments, permits following conditional use permits and development plans, as well as the change in the CDP process. And that's where you requested some additional information about permitting, noticing. We're hopeful that the Coastal Commission will review and approve the noticing package that we forwarded to them and get that into place sometime this year, but the timing is just not real certain with the commission. They have about 15 months to process our amendments, and so it creates a very awkward process, where actually, we're usually doing a better job in the inland area than the coastal area for some time when we make these improvements. So with that sort of background in mind, we thought it would be very helpful to walk through our noticing provisions, where they come from, and the different ways we notice different types of permits. And there are differences inland and coastal. Some, some are required by the law, some are just because of this timing issue. But we're going to focus on land use permits, coastal development permits, MBR meetings, noticing, and then we'll look at discretionary permits, which are essentially handled the same way, and walk through that, and then discuss some issues that you might want to consider in moving this item forward and deciding if we need to make any changes, and if we do, what those might be. We are going to go to the County Planning Commission next week with the same information, and we'll take whatever comments you have to them as well. And then Pat and I will, and Anne, will all be going to the Oversight Committee the following day, so next Thursday, and we'll discuss it with the Oversight Committee as well and see if there are some things that we want to do. So with that, I'll turn this over to Pat, and she'll walk us through, and I'm sure Anne and I will interrupt it, you know, in opportune times.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. We thought the place to start here is what the California Government Code requirements are, because it's important that everybody knows this is the baseline or the foundation upon which our noticing is based. First of all, it's Government Code Section 65090 through 95, as I recall. The first section, what the notice must include, date, time, and place of hearing, that's pretty clear, what the hearing body is, and just a general explanation of what the matter is. And it, all it says is text or diagram, doesn't give you any idea of the level of detail. And it appears that over time, most jurisdictions have provided more and more detail about the project. That seems to be the trend. The notice needs to be sent 10 days, is what the Government Code says, 10 days prior to the hearing. That sometimes causes a bit of problem if there's a delay in the mailing, but regardless, that is the requirement. Sent to the owner, the applicant, obviously, any local agencies that might be providing services, you know, a project along Barker Pass, for example, in your jurisdiction, but I believe it's City Water there, you know, that's the kind of thing. They need to receive notice. And any owner within 300 feet, that's the standard requirement for a discretionary application. And by that would be items heard by your commission, County Planning Commission, zoning administrator, that sort of thing. The notice has to be posted in public location, typically right outside here, elsewhere as appropriate, published in the newspaper, that's the legal ad. And then the code does say specifically, failure to notice, if the assessor's rolls, someone bought a home two months ago and the rolls haven't been updated, typically assessor's rolls, if, if someone provides labels and they're more than six months old, they're requested to update them, because that's the general rule of thumb about the freshness of the data that the assessor has. So this is what the law requires. It's pretty basic stuff. 10 days prior to the hearing, everyone within 300 feet, you put it in the newspaper. That's sort of the overview. What the county tends to do has four basic ways that they notice. Mail notice as required, and as Mrs. Black just said, we have, in the last couple of years, increased the amount of notice, for example, land use permits, BAR notice. But we mail notices typically 300 feet for items heard by your commission, 100 feet for most BAR items, not all. And then the Coastal Commission requires that occupants, renters, within 100 feet also receive notice. Agendas are posted, and for many applications, there's a requirement that a notice be posted on the project site. And sometimes, well, previously, three notices for a land use permit, for example, now it's one. Those requirements vary a little bit. Legal ads are required for any discretionary project, and negative declarations and environmental impact reports. Display ads, a minimum of one-eighth page are used for bigger projects, the Westmont Colleges, Coral Casino, things like that, where there is greater public interest. And the key, we feel, is when that notice is provided. And that's one of the reasons that the changes over the last year and a half have related to moving that notice up, combined with providing several ways that people can find out about projects. There are on- There are online measures through the website that make it easier to find out what's happening with a particular project or in a particular area.
Question?
Mr. Phillips.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. If you go back to the prior slide, can you tell me what, why X feet and then why 100 feet when the state law seems to say 300? And what does X mean, whatever?
Mr. Chairman, in response to Commissioner Phillips, the X is typically 300 feet for some BAR applications. Elsewhere in the county, it's 100. I can't remember if it's 500 or 300 for Montecito BAR. 300 for the Montecito BAR, 500 in the Toro area. Summerland has its own requirement, help me here, 100 feet. So that's why we used X on this slide. It varies depending on the application and the location.
But wouldn't 300 feet be the minimum? Didn't we just learn that?
The minimum for discretionary applications, such as those that come to your Commission, and BAR under that circumstance would not be considered discretionary.
I see.
So just to clarify, we mail notices in other situations besides just discretionary applications. For discretionary, the Government Code says 300 feet, but we use it for other purposes as well.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, another clarification. When we have a larger project or when we know that there's a greater interest in a project, for example, Westmont, you know, we will go well beyond the 300 or 500 feet to target the neighborhoods where we've seen a lot of interest. And so our notice can often go well beyond the state minimum in order to get, to ensure due process.
Thank you.
For ministerial applications, coastal permits in the non-appellable area and then land use permits, the county's ordinances and practices are to require posting of a coastal permit first, a minimum of seven days prior to the decision. So someone walking their dog would see this notice and could follow up on that. And also, the notice must remain posted for 10 days post that decision, and the reason for that is that is when the appeal period is running, so people are informed. It's posted at the county, mailed to property owners within 100 feet, which is basically in the Montecito area, adjacent properties, not always, but some neighborhoods, it would take in a couple properties, but for many, that's the adjacent property. Notice is sent to the Coastal Commission, sorry, this is going to happen throughout, and anyone who has requested notice. The county is quite efficient about making sure that people who have expressed notice, as Ms. Almy said, they are able, the staff is very conscientious about making sure they receive notice. That's really important. It's one of those, instills faith in the process for people, and it is due process, too. Terms of land use permits, the changes made about a year and a half ago require that within 15 days of filing, a notice is mailed by the applicant and they sign an affidavit that they have done so, or it has a different legal name, but that's the essence of it. And they post the site, only one notice, that was the trade-off, the mailing to owners and then one posted notice, which would capture someone maybe just beyond that mailed notice radius and would catch renters in the area and interested persons and posted again at the county. So this has been in effect for roughly a year and a half and certainly appears to have improved the amount of notice that we're getting from neighbors, the number of questions, et cetera.
Ms. Burrows.
How do we define interested persons?
Under B.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Burrows, typically it's people who have expressed interest in knowing about a particular property. We also attempt to notify organizations that we know will be interested in a particular permit application.
Mr. Chairman, basically, having processed a lot of permits earlier in my career, it's always in the staff's and everybody's interest to send that one more notice or one more call because it's much better to know what the issues are early. So people don't hesitate to do that at all. This is probably rather hard to see, but this is sort of the typical land use permit notice that's in effect or in use now at the county, and this is just a mock-up. This one happens to include a BAR hearing, but I think the point here is it's kind of in outline form. It's easier than some of the other notices to figure out what the project is and how to comment, et cetera. And this was all part and parcel of the changes we made to the land use noticing. We also tried to make them easier to understand for people. And we've all received notices from the county and other jurisdictions, and some are more friendly than others, and we're just, we're always trying to get friendlier and friendlier with these. This, as I'm sure you remember, there are basically two different categories of land use permits. Those that require only adjacent property owners get noticed, and this is based on the type of project, and those that require 300 feet. And briefly, those are projects that require BAR approval, second and third story additions, probably the greatest percentage of appeals of land use permits are in that category, accessory structures over 120 square feet, changes of use, home occupations where clients come to the home, residential second units, large family daycare, non-residential childcare, certain telecom facilities, and certain wineries. So what we did in working through the whole process, making these changes, was we looked at the appeal data, where are people concerned about projects in their neighborhood, and the list I just read off are the typical projects that have been appealed over time, not exclusively, but more typically, so we increased the notice on those. This is a lovely home with a posted notice. It's my house. This technically qualifies as a visible location. The garage is set back maybe 25 feet from the road. I put that up to take a picture a while ago, and my neighbors walking by, I could see them squinting, trying to see what it said. People are somewhat reticent to walk onto someone's property and look at a notice. So this is posted within 15 days, at least 10 days prior to BAR or whatever the first hearing or decision, and it's left up during the duration of the appeal period. BAR noticing outside the coastal zone, it's posted, you know, the Brown Act sort of is an umbrella over all of this, a minimum of 72 hours. Usually, it's also noticed as a part of a land use permit. That notice I showed you a couple slides back was an example. And in the Toro Canyon and Montecito areas, there are different requirements. Your question earlier, Commissioner Phillips, 500 feet in Toro, 300 in Montecito. So that's outside the coastal zone. Within the coastal zone, the same sort of requirements, and also, there is a mailed notice 10 days prior. So coastal zone noticing is generally a little bit better. There is one thing relating to BAR is applicants sometimes wish to come to the BAR, any of the BARs, really early in the process, before they even have figured out what their project's going to be. And that, that review is typically not noticed because there isn't really a land use permit or discretionary permit that has started its way through the system. And that first sort of official concept review is the point at which notice is sent currently.
Just a little correction, Mr. Chair. Actually, somebody can get through concept review the first time before they've submitted for a land use permit or coastal development permit. And I think you'll see the last slide where we talk about some issues we might want to talk about. That's really one of them because we would prefer that people become engaged in the process when a project is still at concept review and on these, in these situations where applicants choose to do concept review before applying for a permit, there's no current way of noticing neighbors in certain areas. Some areas there are because BAR is independently noticed, but in other areas, there isn't.
This is a slide with two different versions of BAR notices. The one on the left is a project in Summerland on Ortega Ridge. It's within the jurisdiction of the county BAR, sort of a typical, traditional county notice. There's a lot of verbiage there. The one on the right is a Montecito BAR notice, just like a template. And, you know, these are both used by hearing support staff, sent pretty regularly. And then we move into discretionary notices. Coastal permits in the appeal area are considered discretionary. As with everything else, the notice is posted at the county offices, mailed to owners within 300 feet, occupants 100 feet, Coastal Commission, anyone who's requested notice, and then there's a legal ad. So that's quite a bit of notice for a smaller permit. The notice of intent to waive the public hearing, you recall, we talked about this three or four weeks ago, that is required to be sent 15 days before the action. You recall, if any of the people noticed request a hearing, then there is a hearing scheduled later. So that's the reason for the 15 days, to give ample time, and otherwise, it would be 10. And there is the whole notice of final action process that if you have questions, we'll let Anne or Diane answer those, because I won't. Here is a typical discretionary notice. This was a project actually that was revised. This is the Orchid Aqua Center. This happens to be the February version of the notice. I do note, it got approved, I believe, last week, somewhat different, but regardless, it shows you sort of the typical discretionary notice. And I think this is something that we particularly would like to talk about, these sort of notices that have a lot of words on them, and maybe there are better ways of doing this. Display ad, kind of fuzzy, but these are used again for larger projects or the code says where there are more than 1,000 sort of affected people or interested parties, you can use a minimum of one-eighth page display ad in lieu of mailing notices. And they need, the ad needs to be in a newspaper of general circulation, you know, the news press or the Century Times or the Valley Voice, and you probably use the Montecito Journal, is it, these days? Okay. Just a few, couple other notices from other jurisdictions. On the left is the City of Galita. This happens to be an environmental notice. It's kind of more outlined form, I mean, project location, project description. It's a little broken up as compared to just the long narrative that I showed you previous slide. And on the right, happens to be from Cathedral City. Some jurisdictions include vicinity maps. Again, this is more or less in outline form, applicant, owner, location, what the proposal is, what the environmental review. There's the standard Americans with Disability Act notice that goes on every single mailed On the bottom right, the date and time, planner, phone number, contact information. This is pretty clear. Do you want to be Vanna? Or I was thinking there, because the camera's there. This is a hot-off-the-press photo on a notice of development. This is in the City of Santa Barbara on Mitchell-Treina Street. The city for a year, maybe it's as much as two years, has required these notices for any project, for design review. They have two design review boards. They have a staff hearing officer, kind of akin to the zoning administrator and planning commission, obviously. And they require that these notices go up within two feet of the property line, so they're pretty visible. This one happens to have fairly small writing. The ones I've happened to have seen recently, people were kind enough to use like one-inch letters, and you can be at quite a distance and read what they say. The sleeve on the right is for the notice for the current review, and the city doesn't require that this yellow sign stay up for the duration of the review process. They encourage it, but they don't require it. But 10 days prior to an ABR hearing or a planning commission hearing, this yellow sign with the notice in the sleeve would need to be up, and they also require that it stay up for the duration of construction. So the green building permit, I think it's green, would go in the sleeve, so anybody walking by could find, could find out information and follow up if they see fit. The, I was recently up in San Luis Obispo. They require like four-by-eight, really big signs for discretionary projects. I don't believe they use that for design review, but, you know, every jurisdiction does things a little differently. It's a question of how they post and then how they put the agenda together, or excuse me, the notice together and how it's organized. So finally, the kinds of issues we thought you might like to discuss, this is just to get things rolling, is the coastal zone changes that are pending, and it does make it more difficult for the staff and it's, until those changes are made, excuse me. We have two totally different kinds of procedures, and we feel the new ones are much better, but we have to wait. The timing of the notice. We've done a lot to move that initial notice up. Maybe there's some other things we could do in that respect, particularly about this very early concept review before anything has been filed. The posted notice adequacy. Right now, it's an eight-and-a-half by 11 piece of paper with 12-point Times Roman font, and maybe there's a better way. The mailed notice appearance, if you look at this, I mean, that's two different ways of doing it, some of the others. This is pretty standard for discretionary applications, and I think most anybody looking at this would agree, we can do a better job than this. And then I think it's important to also remember that we want to keep remembering interested parties, people who may live two blocks from a project but are still interested, and make sure that they're part of the mix and are aware of, for example, the ways to find out about projects on the website and things of that nature. That is a constant educational campaign, but there might be easy ways for us to do that, that you might think of. So with that, be happy to answer any questions. It's really just a discussion to see what you think, any ideas you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Burrows.
It seems to me that Montecito might be better served from a larger posted notice. I like this. It's certainly, people would notice it and be able to take whatever action they wanted to take. Also, it seems that the outlined format as opposed to the narrative format is good. If you're walking your dogs or pushing your children around or whatever, if you see the outline, you can read that and understand it as opposed to paragraph after paragraph after paragraph. I had another comment, but I've lost, oh, the site map. I think that's a very good idea because currently, we don't have a site map on our notice. And so you know when you see it on a poster or whatever that you're in the vicinity, but you don't really know where that is. And if we could do a good site map, that would be really helpful. I'm not sure if what's on this, I can't read the fine print, but if you listed the phone numbers for calling or the website again, that's probably already there. That would be helpful also. And I noticed down at the Biltmore, their notices become torn and then people push them back in. I think they're probably pulling- I think they're probably pulling them out of the little plastic cover in order to read them better. So again, it gets back to the bigger font and perhaps the outline format. Thank you.
Commissioner Overholt?
I just had a couple of broad thoughts. One of them is, I think you have to ask, I mean, I know what the noticing requirements are in terms of the form, whether it's an ad or whatever, but I think you have to look a little farther down the time stream and say, where do people get their information? And it's not to say that any of the things that you're doing currently, you should stop doing, but I think there needs to be, my perception is, that there needs to be an increasing reliance on the inexpensive form of communication using the Internet. Now, I know that you can sign up for notification on the county's website. I did that this morning to see how user-friendly it was. And I must say, it's easier to find now than it used to be. But once you get there, the information that's available is overwhelming. I mean, I looked, I mean, since, I don't know how many thousands of permits there were to look at. So I think that's something you need to address. But going back to the, how people get noticed, I think what you want to do is set up a system that people know where they can get it. They don't have to go to the site and look for the, you know, the poster. If you start driving traffic to a specific website, and you could set it up so people can sign up for a project, because if, over the years, one of the things we hear, have heard continuously-